All right, let's begin our committee of the whole meeting. I'm Dennis Roberts, Ward 5, and I'm going to be chairing. So I'd like to call our meeting to order. And when the clerk's ready, I'd like him to call the roll for us, please.
City council members, Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson. Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Well, she's here.
She was here. And there's Eric Jacobson's coming in the door. And the mayor's back here.
Here.
All right, Mr. Jacobson has arrived. All right, we're going to go now to the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting, which was May 29, 2018. Were there any corrections to the minutes? Yes, Mary Alice.
So on page four, one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph down, Alderman Brown said he liked Alderman Brown's ideas.
Oops. Isn't that interesting how that works?
That's exactly how I remember it.
For once, I agreed with myself.
I don't know who Alderman Brown said he liked, but I-
It should be Alderman Ammons' ideas.
Alderman Ammons' ideas, okay. So let's make that correction. All right, any others?
I'll move approval.
Thanks. So we have a motion for approval. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Okay. That's Jared Miller and Aaron Ammons. Any other discussion about that? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that has it, and we're approving the minutes. Will there be any additions to the agenda? Okay, I don't see anybody making those suggestions. So that's fine. Now we're going to move to public input. All right. All right, I guess we'll start with the public input from Brian Moff. Would you like to come forward, please, and address the council? Your topic is firefighters' pension. I understand.
Thank you.
Welcome, guys.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Won't take up much of your time. Just want to, I know that you guys may have received a little bit of information about the pension proposal. Just want to start by saying thank you so much on behalf of the pension fund. We have a very great working relationship with the city. As opposed to most cities, they're in a little bit worse off situation. I think it attests to our working relationship, and on behalf of the firefighters, we thank you so much for that. I do want to mention, you know, we've come a long way. Firefighters pay just under 10% of every check towards their pension costs, and in most cases will not receive social security. In 2011, we made some concessions in order to lessen the financial burden on the cities, and we created that Tier 2 system, which, long-term, should really play out for the cities. We haven't reached that point just yet, but working with Elizabeth has been exceptional. And I think the proposal that the actuary, I believe, has done a presentation for you guys already. You know, although it's not 100% of the unfunded liability today, I think we're really preventing kicking the can further down the road and creating a larger problem. So by addressing it, we're acknowledging and trying to not just meet the minimum, but we're taking small bites, you know, as we go. And I think that's a great situation, both for the city and for the firefighters. So we do appreciate that. I just wanted to speak in and support this resolution. I think having a plan in place really promotes long-term future, not only for the city, but for the firefighters as well. So thank you for letting us speak beforehand, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, any other comments from you fellas? Any questions or comments from our city council? Well, thanks, we kind of agree with you, and I know that the financial plan for the city is to try to progressively cover the pension funds for all the workers that we have here. So retirement is an important part of everybody's life, and to have a secure retirement is certainly a vital gift that people earn. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you, thanks so much.
All right, we got two other people who have sent in public input cards who do not wish to address the city council, but I shall read their comments. First is Elderessel Melinda Carr. She continues to be concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues and the equity and the historic impact that that entails. Okay, so thank you, Melinda. And we have now Bishop King James Underwood, and I'm assuming, no, I can't forget, what, sorry?
Reverend Doctor.
That's right, Evelyn Underwood. Sorry about that. Their concerns are also the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. We are continually concerned concerning the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Okay, so thank you again for your concern and stating that to us. That seems to be the end of public input. Is there any other person who wishes to come forward at this time? Okay, thank you. There don't seem to be any presentations to be listed on our agenda, is that correct? Kind of a relief, perhaps, today. So anyway, any staff report do we have? Ah, all right. Community Development.
Good evening.
Hi.
The community visioning process for What's in Your Square continued in May, and that included presentations to the Farmers Market Advisory Board, Lincoln Square Mall tenants' Plan Commission, as well as at the Quarterly Business and Development Luncheon, which had attendance of nearly 100 people. The mall owner has seen additional interest and is signing new leases, and that's including the new Idea Store, which will be relocating from Champaign into the former Art Mart space. That will be meaning the closing of the 11 for 10 store in that location. Additionally, new businesses are moving into the Independent Media Center, including the Power 102 Jams and the Dose Foundation. Power 102 Jams is an online broadcasting service, and the Dose Foundation is committed to ensure the theater community becomes a better mirror of the world in which we live through providing theater opportunities for underserved groups in the community. We also continue our Thinker Bana marketing campaign. May wrapped up the Facebook Cut campaign, and also had a second neighborhood realtor tour in Stone Creek, which had over 20 attendees. The next tour will be this Thursday, the 14th, at 3:00 at South Ridge. We'll be meeting at the corner of Myra Ridge and Memory. Jumping ahead a few pages, page four, single family, both single-family and total square footage are significantly higher than the previous three years. This is due to 22 new single-family homes with permits pulled between April 1st and June 5th. And this is compared to 27 permits total from January to December in 2017. So actually looking at permits pulled today, we're actually higher this year to date now than we were in total last year. Are there any questions?
Were there anybody, anybody wish to ask a question here at this point about the business? Yes, Jared.
Hey, Libby.
Yeah.
Does that have anything to do with the?
Thinker Bana.
Well, not just Thinker Bana, but, I mean, not the development I'm thinking of on Lincoln north of University, the height spike that we're seeing?
So the 22 is actually all single-family. It's mostly in Stone Creek. They've been developing a lot of houses on spec. So they're doing rental as well as, yeah, so that's the Stone Creek.
Way to go, Stone Creek.
Yeah.
All right.
So that's not including any projects that are multi.
And did you say that you had heard something about who was looking at the 11 to 10 space?
So that's going to be the Idea Store is taking that full space?
They're taking that as well as the old Art Mart space as well?
Yes. So that was the old Art Mart game space, so including that space and the other ones, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Mayor Marlin.
I had a report.
Oh, yeah, then go ahead, please.
That was Libby Horowitz, by the way, giving that economic development report. I just wanted to let folks know, in the aftermath of yesterday's storm, I wanted to first of all thank our firefighters, police, and public works crews who were out yesterday dealing with the storm. We had a report, we had 14 city trees down. Those are trees on city right-of-way. As of this morning, four private trees had also fallen on right-of-way, although I imagine that number has increased as reports came in throughout the day. And they had numerous limbs down and hangers in the trees. So yesterday, a crew of six to eight workers from the Arbor Division and the Operations Division worked from 2:45 in the afternoon until roughly 10:00 on Sunday, dealing with the trees. They also cleaned inlets and surface, to address surface flooding. The crews were in today, and Arbor continued to work with operations to work on trees. So the trees bore the brunt of the storm, and most of the damage was in south and west Urbana. So I wanted to thank everyone for the response, and the street sweepers are also out cleaning the inlet debris, which helps keep these streets from flooding. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no other staff report? Okay. I guess that brings us now to some of the items that are on the agenda for action. And first is the fiscal year 2019 Consolidated Social Service Funding Report Approval. This is going to be the final recommendation from Community Development. Matt?
Hello. Before you today is the final staff recommendation, recommended funding allocation for the Consolidated Social Service Fund. I did want to make one correction to the memo real quick. The total amount available for the allocation is $250,000. Township proposes reducing the amount by $10,000 through Cunningham Township funds to $240,000. So that, just wanted to make that quick correction on there about that. In particular, I know the format is a little bit different from the way things have looked in prior years, when we had a large spreadsheet with different allocations for the different wards. Really, what we're trying to do is organize it into one column and go with the numbers on that, the way it's set up at the back of the memo. I did take a look at the video from the last city council meeting and was able to put together some materials for some of the questions that were asked. With regards to Champaign County healthcare consumers, that organization is being, the grant award's being administered out of Cunningham Township. So I was hoping Danielle might be able to shed some light on that. But for Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, we are in charge, at the city, in charge of administering that grant. And really, what's, I've been in touch with Janice Mitchell pretty closely with what's going on there, and we have an understanding of the documentation that's needed still. And I'm confident that we're going to get it. She's had to take some time off recently and hasn't been able to attend to some of these matters, but I've been in touch with her, and yes, I'm confident that we'll be able to get their award allocations out. Danielle, do you think you could share any about what's going on with Champaign County healthcare consumers?
Sure. Hey, hello from rural West Virginia. Can folks hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So we're talking about the current fiscal year allocation, correct?
That's right.
Yeah, so Champaign County healthcare consumer has submitted all of their documentation for reimbursement for the four installments. And so I've worked with Claudia to get those so that we can make the disbursements before the end of the year. And I think delays primarily have to do with the intensity of work that the healthcare consumers has had this last year in defending the Affordable Care Act and responding to significant changes in Medicaid that have meant, many of our participants have all of a sudden found themselves without mental health care because, for a period of time, Rosecrans was not accepting Harmony Health, and many people had been moved to Harmony Health. So there are examples like that in the conversion of Medicaid that have been very painful for the clients, both at Cunningham Township and CHCC. So we've been working closely together, but their paperwork was delayed. That said, we expect all, I've looked over the paperwork, it's complete, and we'll be making disbursements. And we have several folks, you'll see, that we're waiting on third and fourth quarter, and we've emailed everyone who we're waiting on installment requests from, and we have heard back, and we'll be finishing those requests.
And I did want to follow up on one of the other questions that was mentioned at the last week's council meeting. I do think the pattern that we've shown in the annual report for agencies that we're still trying to get installments out for, I think that's about par for the course for previous years. I think, you know, there's a few of the big exceptions with healthcare consumers and the Neighborhood Connection Center, but with those out of the way, I think we're pretty much about where we usually are with regards to getting the money out the door. The last question that I was able to see from the meeting last week related to statistics after the award has already been dispersed, you know, where did the clients go from there? What ends up happening? We don't currently track that right now, but as we're putting together the annual report, this is the first year that we've done that, so that's definitely something that we can try to incorporate into next year's annual report, taking a look back at prior years and trying to gauge our effectiveness a little bit more. So with that in mind, I want to open it up for any other questions that city council may have.
And are there, Eric Jacobson?
So there are a few really dramatic changes from last month, so I'd like to go through the list and make sure that I-
Of course.
We all understand why. So one is zeroing out Regional Planning Commission senior services. What was the reason for doing that?
The reason there was that it was, first, it was a small amount, and the second reason that it was, Danielle, you can fill in here, but my understanding was that the services are duplicitous with another senior services agency in the community. So between the small amount and the duplicative services, we decided to decrease the funding for that, but then send much, redistribute much of the funding to the Regional Planning Commission centralized intake program instead.
Okay. The other organization that took not a zeroing out, but a substantial cut in the last month was Courage Connection. I wonder why that is?
The reason for that is, in the past, Courage Connection has offered two separate programs. They were each funded around $15,000 to bring to a total of about $30,000. And that changed last year as the agency moved towards a domestic violence-only track and serving only survivors of domestic violence. And the other program was more geared towards homelessness and transitional housing without that domestic violence component. Last year, the funding, they were going through the state budget crisis, and there was a desperate need for funding on their end. But this year, the staff recommendation is to sort of bring just the domestic violence component, which in previous years was less than $30,000, closer to 15. We want to try to bring that funding amount closer to the way it was in the past. And that was our intention there, and yeah, it's a pretty substantial cut, but the services that are being provided are relatively comparable. Danielle, is that in line with the thinking?
Yeah, can I just add a couple, thank you, Matt, just a couple of big-picture pieces? So what you'll see in this year is that there are several very significant pieces that were missing from the social service application process, primarily having to do with shelter, emergency shelter. Now, you'll see a new program, CU Men's Emergency Shelter, which Township funded as an interim grant, you may recall, as Town Board in November. They have come and requested a certain amount, and we are actually proposing to give them more than their requested amount, because it comes with the caveat that we're requesting them to open two months early. So for $30,000, they would open two months early, and they would save the Township significant dollars in terms of supporting the homeless population. So we see that as a win-win. We also, this year, are missing two very important components to our portfolio. The Time Center, the emergency, which is a transitional shelter for men, is missing from this picture. So essentially, we're looking to reallocate that money that used to go to Community Element slash Rosecrans to CU Men's Emergency Shelter. But what is also missing from the portfolio is there is no transitional shelter for women in this portfolio. It was not applied for, because Courage Connection does not intend to continue to run that program. They've lost their federal funding, and their domestic violence funding cannot go to mortgages, and it cannot go to transitional or emergency, excuse me, transitional shelter. Very specifically barred from that. So financially, Courage Connection really only has one of their typical two applications in, and that is for domestic violence. What we are recommending is that the city council set aside $20,000 in your budget, and I've spoken to the mayor about this, and she can speak to it after I speak, if that's relevant. My suggestion is that $10,000, and let me correct what Matt said, I'm sorry, Matt, there may be a miscommunication. $10,000 of what the city contributes would actually be put aside for shelter, and then $10,000 from past allocations that have not been spent, which generally are in your general fund, so you'd be pulling them out of the general fund, would be set aside. I have requested that the city put aside $20,000 to support emergency and transitional shelter for women as a deeply felt need that's missing. The Township is putting aside $50,000 if you approve the final Town Board budget for the same. So there'd be $50,000 from Cunningham Township, 20 from the city, 10 would be taken out of this allocation. And then the City of Champaign, City of Champaign Township, United Way, Mental Health, RPC have all been asked to contribute. And I don't have final numbers, but it's looking very positive from those different agencies that, within their funding cycles, they would be able to contribute something. So we're trying to piece together a community solution for women, because we are about to lose 33 beds at Courage Connection of transitional shelter, and that's going to have a huge impact on our community. And Courage Connection did not apply for support for those beds in this application. They only are asking for domestic violence support, which primarily will go to East Main Street. And so I have spoken with ESOC, the Executive Director, and she is aware that we are going to be decreasing, that we're proposing a decrease in their funding, but we may be sending them money for renting their church street properties through a different line item in the budget. So I know that's a little bit confusing, but that's the big picture, is we're trying to solve a problem of lack of shelter for women and women with children that is not in this portfolio. And so we need to tear off some of the money from this to be able to provide for that need.
Okay, thank you, Danielle. Other questions, Mary, Alice, did you have any?
Oh, no, I, there were a couple of other small things, but I think too small to mention.
So my questions, and Danielle answered some of them, Eric asked some of them. My first question was, I don't have a problem with increasing the men's shelter amount, but I'd rather see a proposal for exactly what that entails. I would prefer not to grant anybody more than what they requested in the first place without saying documentation for exactly why we are giving people more money than they requested.
The reason for that is on the condition that they open two months earlier, and if they don't, then they would not receive the additional funding?
We could revise the contract. I think it's a reasonable request, and I understand the request. We've spoken about taking our existing contract and adding this kind of fee-for-service aspect to it, and so we could get you the contract that would be going to CU Men's Emergency Shelter with that provision in it prior to your final vote on this.
Okay, that would be helpful. And just to know, I mean, I'm assuming, since you're adding one month on either side, that's $15,000, I'm assuming that's for staff time, $15,000, is that generally?
And rent.
And rent, right. Okay, and then, I'm curious, it's not a ton of money, but I do think that it is something worthwhile to bring up, which is the Community Study Center, which is 100% Urbana, that it serves, has been decreased a bit. I mean, they asked for $20,000, they've gotten 14 and 15, now we're saying 12,000. I'm curious why that decision was made when a lot of places are getting fully funded or close to it.
One of the reasons there was just that the youth study, the youth development program is more in line with the city council and township goals for creating employment opportunities for youth. And we really had to make cuts across the board on these to try to move funding around for emergency shelter activities. So that was one of the reasons that we did that. Also, we know that there's been some changes with, programmatically, at the Community Study Center. We're not really sure about the satellite office at the IMC. I don't believe it's in operation anymore of the Community Study Center. It used to be, now I believe most of their activities are at the Main Street location. And with that in mind, and just sort of the uncertainty around that one, we wanted to keep the funding level the same at the Neighborhood Connection Center, but distribute it more along the lines of the youth development program. That was sort of our thought process. Danielle, would you agree with that?
Yeah, the Community Study Center is a program that's in flux, and I think there's some concern, given that it closed early and has moved back to the East Main Street location. Questions regarding the Community Study Center have not been answered to date, and I think the curriculum for the Community Study Center does not have a significant structure to it. It tends to be an after-school space where teens can study and meet. It's fairly unstructured. I think that that program, as a funder, needs some development. I very much support Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center. I think it's an important organization in the community. It 100% supports Urbana youth. The Urbana Youth Development Program is very clearly a strong program of UNCC, and it provides youth employment opportunities. The Community Study Center is, I think, a program in development that needs some more thought and program design, and we're hoping in this next year we can meet with the leadership at UNCC and work out kind of design plans for that program that help to strengthen it. I don't think it's a good idea to continue to, I think it's better to fund the stronger program at this moment that's more defined than to fund a program where some of the basic questions about where it's located and how it's operating are uncertain.
Okay, all right. And then last, which is kind of a philosophical issue, is the, I just want to make sure that I call it the right thing, the mental health services, primary care, and the people who are requesting are Champaign County Christian Healthcare Center. Very cautious about using public funds, tax funds, for religious organizations. I dug down a little bit into this application, and it appears that the funds that are being requested are being requested so that they can use their other funds for other purposes, and they say, basically, "It will allow them to either save funds by working less or use that time to conduct other work related to activities such as fundraising," end quote. That is why they are requesting the money. And so for that reason, I really can't support the funds for this, for those two reasons. So I would like to know the thoughts of the committee, of the whole. I'm allowed to pose that question.
Anyone want to add a thought to that insight? Aaron Ammons?
So there was a, I believe, a conversation last year about the concern for proselytizing and using the funds from the city for that purpose, and- And I don't think, I don't recall anyone else digging down any deeper as to what you've shared and offering what the, what their answers were or what their rationale was for the request. I find the rationale troubling because there should be a particular service that they offer in relationship to the request, so I share your concerns.
Brown. Yeah, I would want to look at the application. We didn't really get the, get the full applications for these, so I'd be open to putting this off for another two weeks and keeping it in committee. I do have a question about the 25% increase for Champaign County healthcare consumers. I know for some of the larger increases, we were expecting fee-for-services, for additional services, and I did get a chance to look at their application. I had it emailed to me, and it didn't look like they were adding anything, so I wondered what your thoughts were on that.
I'm sorry, which organization was that?
Healthcare consumers.
The healthcare consumers. We were interested in keeping the funding level relatively similar just because of really the need for the healthcare services, but also the danger that the federal funds they receive could be in, given some of the uncertainty at other levels of government.
There's actually a 25% increase. Last year, it was $16,700, and this year, it's $21,000. I know they have, other, other organizations provide similar services, like CU Public Health will help people sign up for Affordable Care Act services, and healthcare consumers does a lot of great work in the jails, they get reimbursed for that. I would be open to maybe asking them if they could open office hours in Salt and Light or something like that, where they would have a Urbana location, because right now, I think, most of the locations where you could go for help are in Champaign, so maybe we could talk to them about that.
That's definitely a possibility.
Could I just speak to that, those two issues? So, first, Champaign County Christian Health Center, I share the initial concern, and I, I honestly wish that there was a different way to get the need met, but sometimes you have to work with what you've got. So, we did dig into, and Mary Alice, I'm, I'm really glad you asked the question about reproductive health referrals and services. I think that's an important piece of the equation when we look at funding. My, so I had a conversation with this group before they applied, and, and I also looked at their application closely. My understanding of what they're applying for is a little bit different, and maybe we should look at the application in the meantime. My understanding is that they're asking for money for outreach to mental health professionals who would volunteer their time to provide mental health services to those who are not covered. And so, the reason I'm supporting this proposal, despite some of the, some similar concerns about religious affiliation, is because lack of mental health services in the community is so, at such a crisis level right now. And with the change from Community Elements to Rosecrans, there's been a lot of shakeup, and that need was, the, the, the waiting list at Rosecrans, Community Elements/Rosecrans has been long and significant for a long time. And I know because I have worked with people to try to get mental health services, and their wait lists are just ridiculous. I know Cunningham Children's Home has opened up counseling services. I know that Family Services is finally asking for Medicaid reimbursement for their counseling. Right now, they don't take Medicaid, so that kind of makes them a non-player for counseling for poor people. So, but this, this piece is really needed, and, and I see it as small input getting a big impact. So, small input is what, $7,500? And the big impact is that we might be able to add, the goal is to add four to six mental health professionals to serve the poor and immigrant populations in the community. And we have to get this done, and this might not be the best way of doing it, and maybe looking at future portfolios, we can pull back, but like, this is a really urgently felt need, and we have to figure out how to plug the hole. So, that's how I see this piece. I'm happy to talk about it further, I definitely share some of the concerns. On the issue of Champaign County healthcare consumers, the, the level of assault on Medicaid cannot be underestimated right now. The chaos that participants experienced this last year with their healthcare, and the fact that we're seeing additional assaults and a move towards Medicaid where you would have to work to receive your care is a big sea change, that we don't have that in Illinois yet. I'm certainly open to your suggestions, as you are the final decider on these allocations. But the piece I would just put in the mix is, we need to ensure that Champaign County healthcare consumers have the funding they need to provide the services. And otherwise, township in particular will feel, our participants are really going to feel the pain. Healthcare consumers is one of our most frequent referrals that we make, and the level of service, the completeness of their application, has been very, very high, higher than many agencies that we work with. They just are, their response time is just excellent. So, I, I want to, you know, I'm in some ways investing in making sure that people are taken care of in the future for this next year. And I love the idea of suggesting a satellite location in Urbana. I think that that would be grand. So, I, you know, I'm open to, if you want to make a reallocation here, that's the justification, and we can certainly ask about a, a location in Urbana.
Okay, thank you. And New American Welcome Center, I think, has a similar type of thing they're doing at the Urbana Free Library for, for new immigrants, helping them sort of get through the system. So, I think it's something that we could encourage, either at the library, or Salt and Light, or wherever else they could, they could do it in Urbana. Thanks.
All right. Other, yes, Mary Alice?
I, I just have a general question. So, I, I just happen to be looking, because I had it up, the Champaign County Christian Healthcare Center. And one of the questions is identify the number of recipients your program has the capacity to serve. That's one of the questions. So, for example, on this one, it says 400 people, 1,200 visits, and then it says, identify the actual total number of persons you are currently serving, which is 285 or 1,096. And so, at least according to those numbers, they have enough funding to serve more people. And I saw this in a couple of places, and so, perhaps I'm reading this incorrectly. I saw this under the First Followers as well, where they said that they had the capacity to serve 10 people, but they're only serving six people. So, I was wondering if you could speak to that specific item on the application.
So, we, we got in touch with agencies about that because we had many of the same questions. We noticed a lot of gaps there between what agencies stated that they could provide and what they actually were. And there really wasn't, there wasn't one answer for that. It really depended on the agency. In some cases, it was staffing. In one agency, it was that they were only licensed for a certain amount by the state, even though they had the physical capacity to serve even more people. And in, in some cases, it's, it actually was the way the agency interpreted the question with regards to materials they might have to serve people, but not necessarily the staff. So, with regards to the Christian Health Center, I'm looking through my notes here, and I'm not entirely sure. Danielle, do you recall anything, what their limiting factor was in terms of meeting their capacity?
Yeah, I'm looking, because we asked, every place where there was a significant gap, we asked about capacities. I'm, I'm pulling that up. I don't see, I would have to pull our email correspondence with them, because I'm not seeing it in our big notes where we put responses. What I do remember from the conversation is, they, they let us know, when I met with them, I met with Jeff Tresk, who is President of their board, and their staff member, the head doctor, whose name I can't recall at the moment, but we, they said that they were seeing shifts in the needs in the community, so that their traditional programs were not being used at their fullest, and yet, they, they saw an increasing need in mental health and dental. And so, their proposal specifically focuses on mental health and dental, but I think it's a good question to say, why wouldn't you shift existing capacity from this here over to here? I do know that they basically, they're different doctors that they need to be cultivating, and for dental, they need specific equipment. So, part of this money is to purchase equipment to do dental work that they can't, right now, they only do extractions, they don't do preservation of teeth, and so, this equipment would allow them to do preservation of teeth, which I think is notable. The, but they, they need to basically do outreach to psychiatrists and then be able to support psychiatrists and, and folks who can dispense mental health medication, to prescribe mental health medication. So, it's something that we could follow up with in the interim. It sounds like you all are considering keeping this in committee, and we'd be happy to follow up with specific questions that you have.
Thank you.
Okay. I had a question, too. Can you explain the, the benefit that the Solograti Farm gives to the community through the city's allocations?
Headed food security is really what they go to, and they, they serve low-income individuals, and, you know, I, I know it's something that's, maybe people think more of Chicago when you hear the word "food deserts," but it can be a situation in a community like ours as well. And being, having access to fresh fruits and vegetables is an important part of anyone's diet, especially kids who are growing up and need access to that food, and they are able to provide that in a way that the private sector can't really do in, in some cases.
So, I know that most people sign up a subscription for, for food baskets that they collect on a regular basis, maybe it's every week or every other week, I can't remember. How does the less advantageous individual who may not be able to afford those kinds of assistances, how do they get their assistance from Solograti?
My understanding is that they use this funding to provide, to offset some of the fruit and vegetables that they are providing to lower-income individuals. Danielle, is that your understanding?
How do they distribute that to the individuals?
They have satellite locations, they're able to distribute it to...
What, the Illinois Food Bank or such?
I, I believe it's along those lines, although I might be getting it confused with the Eastern Illinois Food Bank. But I want to...
I'm pulling their application right now, unfortunately, yeah, I'm on satellite internet, so, oh, here we go. Yeah, it's real slow. It's gonna take about a half, a half a minute for me to pull their application. My, my understanding is that they're basically providing free food in Urbana locations, that they are growing on-site on their Philo Road location, and that this helps to offset some of the costs of that. I think one, we went back and forth around the food security issue, partly because SNAP is such a successful program. It's really a model for what programs could look like, and we're seeing a, a big assault on SNAP as there is a move by the federal administration to require people to work for their SNAP, which would be a game changer. So, let's see, okay, so, what happens is Solograti, it will basically be providing their food for free to the Champaign or Urbana Public Health District. We send a lot of people there because they put out free foods and vegetables and healthy food, and so, many of our participants frequent the health, the public health district. They will be providing food to Salt and Light, and that will be distributed through their nonprofit grocery store. They are distributing through the five playdates in the park, at the five public parks, that'll be food, free food at Urbana Park District. And then, they do, they're expanding their CSA and nutritional education program with U of I extension to teach cooking and nutrition classes called Mark It To My Plate for 80 families. So, that would help people to bring in healthy food choices into their, into their, their cooking. So, essentially, those are the specific places where this money would go towards.
Okay, that, that does answer my question. Yes.
Yeah, no, some of, some of their food ultimately is distributed at food banks. Or, the, food pantries. I'm not sure if they do that directly, or if that goes through Eastern Illinois Food Bank, which then distributes to the food pantries, but it, it gets to food pantries.
Mr. Ammons?
Yes, the Guardian Ed Litem program, could you tell me more about why, and what their application says that it provides?
Are you talking about Casa?
Yes, Casa.
Yep. So, Casa provides, it's called Court Appointed Special Advocates, and they're an agency in town that coordinates with volunteer advocates so that children always have an advocate in court with them. And typically, these are court cases that involve children who may be going through the court system or be victims of violent crimes. Let's see, I am pulling up their application here. Give us one second.
And I would like to add, they are, they've been a participant in the Consolidated Social Service Fund for a while, and they've been one of the, the best agencies to work with. Rush Record is, you know, the Executive Director there, he's very easy to work with, he always gets us our materials in a very prompt manner, and they do a great job over there.
So, the case managed 370 children. They focus on abused and neglected children in Champaign County court system. They provide volunteer advocates who work side-by-side with agencies and the individuals involved in the child's case, as well as legal represent, representation for children throughout the court process. And then, the individuals report back to the court and make recommendations to the judge involving the child. They, advocates are assigned to a particular children's case, they conduct regular visits to children who do not have advocates. The visits are completed by Casa staff or trained volunteers who are supervised by the advocate coordinators. And then, they look at the, the living environments where the children are placed, and then it relay to the court information that they, that are their findings. I'm basically reading directly from their, from their program description.
And you said it's for abused and neglected children?
Yes.
And my, the last question was, I know the New American Welcome Center was a, a new addition for us, and I see the New American Welcome Center as well as the, I'm just trying to make this connection here, oh, the East Central Illinois Refugee Mutual Assistance Center. Is there any overlap in those services, or is that, are those two completely different programs?
We had actually asked Eastern and Central Illinois, we had a similar question, to what extent do these agencies collaborate? And they do collaborate with one another. It seems that, so, Eastern, East Central Illinois Refugee Mutual Assistance Center, a big part of their contribution is translation services for many languages in the community. So, translation and connection is a big piece. The New American Welcome Center, especially the piece that you would be funding, and what is in their application, is really to launch a legal services program. It's a, it's a deeply felt need in the community. We don't have, we don't have immigration lawyers in the community to work with low-income populations, and so, this is an attempt to create a legal center for them. So, I think in terms of programmatically, they're very different, but I know that they do collaborate with one another.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for, yes, Jared?
This isn't really a question. Matt, if you could ask Kelly and Danielle as well, this is just a, something I, I was thinking when I was looking over this last week, I think most all my questions have been asked by the council members, but I was thinking, when we're trying to make determinations on this, a lot of, it is such scattered information and is sometimes a little hard to decipher where holes are being plugged, where holes are, where we're finding, and I'm thinking that if we started generating something going forward of a weighted point scale system... scale system to attribute certain factors towards the significance of the funding, for example, you know, one criteria might be lack of need, you know, where there's a big gap of need, they might be weighted a higher points, a more significant point. If they serve more Urbana residents, they might be weighted higher. If they, if our allocation is a larger portion of their overall budget for a year, they might be weighted higher. These, these kinds of factors, and we could add a column into our analysis that says, you know, these people have, you know, a point factor of almost 10 because it's a lot of their budget, they serve mostly Urbana residents, and it's a big gap that we need to fill in the community. I think looking at things like that, being seen those kinds of things broke down would help ease all of our, the complications, not just of the council, but of anyone in general trying to analyze where all this money is going and what the significance is. You know, you and I talked about significance the last time we talked about this and, you know, the end results, and this might help us, you know, create a system where we can kind of see where that's going and see where effectiveness is being, being made.
And I totally agree. And that is the intent behind our distribution and our scoring criteria. Need in the community was something that we had, as a scoring committee discussed, it was, it really was our overriding goal, was to be able to make sure that this money met the needs in the community first and foremost. But I definitely see being able to quantify that somehow and turn that into a multiplier to expand the amount of funding in some consistent manner. I think that could, that could be definitely something that we keep in mind for future allocations.
Sure, just something to, something to consider.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Yes, Erin?
I'm sorry, there was one last thing about the Urbana Park District, the youth summer employment program. $1,500 is the staff recommendation. And I didn't know if there was a, that was the amount for one youth for the summer or something? Could you elaborate on, I mean, it seems like a pretty small amount for an employment program.
Yeah, the, the funding, I can't say for sure exactly how that would go. The way, we administer their grant right now through the current allocation from the previous year. And it's usually split up between several different students. That's the, the way they've submitted that information to us, over a couple hundred dollars just to try to provide extra funding to fill gaps for certain students. So it's, it's more of a small amount given to a larger number of students than, I guess, one or two students funded for a month. Really, one of the main reasons that we were reluctant to provide additional funding was the fact that it's, it's another taxing body. And us being a taxing body, it's, it, there is a bit of a philosophical issue there. And, you know, we were reluctant to increase it because of that. And also because we do want to try to work with their program a little bit more, to try to, try to build diversity within their staff and with the students. You know, we looked at their information on that and we, we've realized that there's some work to do there. So that's why we wanted to try to definitely give them funding, but also incentivize them to work a little bit more towards some of the goals that we're setting.
All right, thank you.
All right. So does anybody want to make a motion then concerning the consolidated funding for 2019? Yes, Mary Ellis?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we keep this in committee.
I'll second.
Okay, so Erin is going to be seconding?
Sure.
All right. Other discussion about that motion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, that'll come back to us. Thank you very much. All right, number eight on the agenda, an ordinance, number 2018-06-045, an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2018, 2019 annual budget.
Okay, so we have the budget ordinance here along with a list of changes that would be made from what was in the proposed budget document to the final budget. Basically, this is pretty routine. We've discussed all of the significant issues at some point along the way. And this would be the last opportunity before you vote next week to suggest any further changes. Or I can answer questions about anything that's not clear.
Right, and we're actually going to talk about three different ordinances. I guess we could, I could, I could list them all. Also ordinance number 2018-06-046, which revises the annual budget ordinance for 2017-18. It's a budget amendment, amendment number nine. And a resolution 2018-06-023, adopting financial policies. All right, so we could, we could probably address all those, I don't know.
Do you want me to speak related to all of those now or do we want to do?
Well, I guess you could answer questions to all of them. And, but we'll vote on them separately.
Okay.
Okay.
So did you want me to explain the other two then before we answer questions?
I guess so, yeah.
Okay, so, so the second ordinance amends the current budget. So normally when, so always when we prepare the proposed budget, we also provide you with updated estimates for the current year. And then at the time we adopt the budget, we also amend the current budget to match those estimates. Just like the budget ordinance, there is a list of changes from what was included in the proposed budget to what we're asking you to adopt. And many of those you'll notice are timing differences. For example, in the timing of when we're spending money on capital improvement projects, things like that. You'll notice that we'll be reducing expenditures in the current year and then increasing in the next year. And then the third item here is the updated financial policies that we're asking you to approve. And the only two changes in the financial policies relate to, first, the pension funding issue that we discussed at some length on the 29th. And so that would incorporate the funding policy that, that was recommended and discussed on that evening. And then also, we would revise the policy on what constitutes a balanced budget to say that, that would be defined as recurring expenditures do not exceed 98.5% of recurring revenues. So there's three council bills here, all related to the budget.
Okay. So are there questions then for, for Elizabeth? Yes, Bill Brown?
So on the current budget, the increase in legal services of $30,000, we just did a $30,000 increase a couple weeks ago, didn't we? Or is this the same one?
Yeah, that, that's actually the same one. So I'm trying to reconcile from what was in the proposed budget to what's in the final budget you're going to approve. And you actually did that amendment after we had brought the proposed budget to council. So it's the same $30,000.
And then in the next year's budget, could you remind me what Green Infrastructure Services is? It's page one, under expenditures, the General Operation, General Operating Fund?
Third one down from the top.
Yeah, I see it there. My mind's, I'm a little foggy on that one. I may have to get back to you on that.
Greenscapes maybe?
It's, it's probably either Legacy Tree Program or Greenscapes or one of those specific programs that's in that Arbor Division budget.
Or is that solar paneling?
No, not in that, in that program. That's not what it is.
Okay.
And this is a proposed increase? The proposed is what we have already and the adopted is what you want to change it to?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So it would be an increase up to $64,000?
Yeah, so it's a, but it's a, it's a reallocation among line items in that program, so.
Okay, yeah, if we could get more information on that.
Other questions for Elizabeth? Yes, Mary Ellis?
So I realize I wasn't here for the conversation about the Civic Center. I am concerned, I know that council had a meeting and where we went and looked at the Civic Center and we saw the condition of it. I think that the community is quite concerned about the suddenness of the closure. And I'm trying to figure out if there's a creative way. I know that there was a lot of conversation about fundraising and so forth. I spoke to the mayor today a little bit about some ideas. I don't think she was very happy about those ideas, but, so I'll just float them here and see what other people have to say. So my, my question is this, is it possible to keep the Civic Center open for one year? We are getting the facility study conducted soon. I think, I heard that it was two years out, that's the proposed date for the completion of the, of the facility study, is that correct? Two years? Approximately. I know that we are operating in the deficit. So right now, we are $40,000 in the hole, I believe, is that correct, Elizabeth?
Right, on an annual basis, we're about $40,000 to $50,000 in the hole on our operating expenses alone. That doesn't include setting aside funds for capital improvements.
Right, right, right. Operating, so operating, to keep it open, it's costing the city $40,000 to $50,000 a year?
Correct.
Okay, without doing anything to the building at all?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So if we are proposing to close it in December, then we are basically assuming that we are going to lose between $20,000 and $25,000 this year on operating expenses?
Yeah, in, in a very simple way, yes. There were some additional expenses that were added into the budget related to sort of transitioning out of the operation. So for example, one of those was, we anticipated in the budget that we might have some one-time expense related to separating some of the employees.
Okay, so payout of some kind?
Yes.
All right, so I guess this is one of the things that I was thinking about. We're already accepting that we're going to lose between $20,000 and $25,000 this year. Would it be possible to raise the rates for anybody who has not signed a contract for one year and to offset some of the additional $20,000 to $25,000 that we would be losing for the remainder of the fiscal year that we're getting ready to fund? That would give people an opportunity to think through some of these solutions, to come up with some ideas in terms of what are our next steps? I'm not proposing that we put any more money into the Civic Center. I'm just proposing to keep it open for a slightly longer amount of time at the moment and also to reduce the amount of money that we are currently losing. So that's, that's what I'd like to pose to the committee.
Very good. Other comments to that? Yes, Dean?
Elizabeth, how long have we been losing $40,000 to $50,000 a year? And then my second question is, what will it cost us to just keep the building there if it's closed?
So I can't tell you how long we've been losing money on operating the Civic Center. I've been here almost four years now and for that entire time and I expect for many years prior to that, we've been in that situation. So there's, of course, even if we close the building, there's some minimal cost. I mean, we can't just, you know, shut off the water and not heat it at all. And so there's some minimal cost to keep it open, but it would be pretty minimal.
Okay. Do we have, if I can ask one more question, do we have a clue as to who might buy it or what it might be used for if we close it?
Well, I don't, the, the plan now is to wait for the results of the facility study before we make a decision. So it's not a given that we would sell it. It just depends on the outcome of the facility study.
Yes, Eric?
So I, I just want to pick up on what Mary Ellis said about raising the rates. Now, my understanding is that to break even, we have to bring in approximately 70% more revenue than we're bringing in. Is that, is that approximately right?
So when, when we looked at this, and this is one of the things that we did as we evaluated this, we determined that to break even, we would have to increase the rates by 72%. And the concern, as, as we discussed that, was that at those rates, there were a lot of other options that people could consider that might be more suitable for their events.
But, but that 72% is, assumes the same utilization rate that we have now, is that correct?
Yes, which may not be realistic.
Which would, might, yeah, would probably wouldn't be. If we raised the rates, the utilization would probably go down. So, but I think, so I also had a conversation with the mayor and, and with a lot of other people. And I guess I would propose that we challenge the community, I mean, lots of people in the community say, oh, we don't want to lose the Civic Center, we don't want to close the Civic Center. We love the Civic Center. We even, I mean, although we have all seen that the Civic Center needs work, I mean, I hear people say, I love the Civic Center even the way it is. And so I think it would be very reasonable to challenge the community to, you know, really vote with their dollars by, you know, for people who don't yet have contracts, cranking the rates up to double what they are now. And which might bring in 70% more revenue if given some attrition. And if people are not willing to pay what it would really take to make it a viable thing, then we can shut it. And we know that we have answered, you know, sort of the question as to how much people really want it.
Yes, Dean?
Sorry, go ahead, she's been waiting.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the mayor has actually raised her hand earlier.
No, go ahead, Dean, I'll follow, Dean.
Old men first, huh? Can you, Elizabeth, tell me what that actual 72% number looks like in reality? Like, is it a daily rate or what would that number be if I wanted to rent a room there?
So there, there are a number of rates depending on the day of the week, whether you're a nonprofit or, or not a nonprofit. And how much space you occupy in the facility and how many hours of the day you use. So we have three sessions per day, you know, morning, afternoon, evening. You can rent from one quadrant of the facility to the entire facility. But the lowest rate, I'll just, I'll give you kind of the range if, if I can. So one session, one quadrant for a nonprofit would be $35, so that might be just a morning, a, a small section of the facility. And then up to $750 for the entire ballroom, so all four quadrants of the facility on a weekend. And then there are additional fees depending on, you know, early arrival, if you're using a stage, if you're using the kitchen, if you're serving alcohol.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize it was so complex. Thank you.
Mayor?
I just wanted to remind folks both here and at home, the, the bigger picture that we're dealing with. And when we talk about raising fees and keeping the center open for one more year, that's, that's the short term, only a part of the whole thing. So we're, we're looking at a deficit in our, a budget gap in our General Operating Fund that's close to $2.5 million based on what we can see now. The budget for this year that we're proposing starts to address that gap, but it's just the beginning. And we're proposing reductions of about $623,000, which includes the shutdown of the Civic Center. It's just the beginning. We're going to be looking at more next year, both in spending reductions and perhaps in revenue increases. But it's a $2.5 million gap from what we can tell at this point. That is what we have to do to get us back on adequate funding of pensions, building our reserves and addressing the structural deficit in our budget. For years, we've, our expenses have been increasing faster than our revenues and we haven't really faced that reality. And that's what these proposed, this proposed budget is doing. So the operating deficit in the Civic Center is probably closer to $50,000 a year when you consider our facility manager's time. He spends about 15% of his overall time dealing with the Civic Center. We do have staff onsite, but the facility manager also spends a lot of time on the Civic Center. And that's, that's, you know, raising the fees is actually the easy part. It's the, the condition of the building. And again, our initial estimates are anywhere from $750,000 to $1 million in necessary repairs just to get the place up to an acceptable condition. We've, we've become accustomed to the, the state of that Civic Center and it's really, it's, it's, it's not a good reflection on the city. We're also at the point where it's liability. The, the roof leaks, of course, so there's, there's water on the floor occasionally, but, but things like the chairs, we've had two instances of where the welds on chairs have broken while people were sitting in them. So, so, you know, things like that have been happening over the past few years in addition to the complaints we get about, about the facility. So the proposal to, I would view this as a shutdown of the Civic Center. It, it might not be the end of that building, but it's a shutdown while we evaluate the condition of the building, explore options, explore alternative venues, evaluate even the operation of the center itself. It's possible that someone else would operate the center. But the big piece, the big bit of information that's missed- But the big piece, the big bit of information that's missing is the evaluation of the condition of the facility as part of this overall plan. And we should have more information when that facility analysis is done. And then we're going to have to make decisions on balance the needs of that building against the needs of all of our other facilities in the city, including our fire substations, our police department, our public works department, where we're parking extremely expensive equipment outside because there's nowhere to park it inside. So this is part of a very large picture that really hasn't been addressed. And budget decisions that have been made over the past years have really, unfortunately, closed a lot of doors for us today. And that's why we're in the position we're in today. And this is a really hard one. I know that, and I know, you know, I've been on council for eight years and now I'm mayor, and this is a really tough one because I know that, you know, the role this building has played in our city. But it's a question of, I think we need to have some certainty. And the other thing that we haven't mentioned is the employees. We've kind of kept them dangling for a year now as we talked about it. And now to say, well, we'll see how we can go for a little bit longer and maybe if this community responds, then we'll keep it open. But really, we also have employees who work here and also deserve some certainty too. So I understand why people are proposing this, I really do. And I probably might be doing the same thing if I were in your position. But I truly cannot recommend, you know, trying to keep this open, you know, for the rest of the year. We need to make a decision on this.
Okay, Eric. So I'm, you know, willing to pass the budget as it sits, but I would really ask that in the near future, we have Civic Center as a separate item on the agenda where we make a decision as to whether we will, you know, whether we'll make this attempt to see how much the community really wants it or whether we'll decide just to, just to shut it down. I understand the desire for certainty. But I also feel from the community a desire to give the facility every chance that we can. And so I think maybe we should consider this as a separate agenda item and just vote it up or down.
All right. I'm wondering if, Carol?
May I interject something?
Yes, Carol?
In your suggestion, Mr. Jacobson, as it relates to the budget and passing the budget, the idea would be at some point that the negative would be eliminated. So when you take it up as a separate agenda item, would you also be potentially changing another line item to offset a potential negative? Or is it that the context you would be creating is one in which it broke even?
So, you know, the future, of all things to predict, the future is the hardest. But I, my hope is that it would break even. And my feeling is that if it does, I mean, bottom line is, under no circumstance will we be able to operate that facility with the present fee structure, whether we, you know, make it really a lot nicer or not. So I guess I'm proposing to, you know, in this manner, test the market and also demonstrate to, I know my constituents, but probably many people's constituents, that we have heard them and we want to give them a chance to make this facility, you know, possibly work.
I understand that aspect of it, but the offsetting aspect of it is that there will, if there is a negative, the money has to come from somewhere. So what would be the offset to that negative? That's the point I'm raising.
If we don't get enough of a response to offset the negative, then let's go ahead and shut it down.
And is that an authority that you would give to the mayor to make that call?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, of course, it's not up to me. The council would have to decide.
No, but that's what I'm saying, is there needs to be a-
But in my, but in my view, yes. If we, if we raise the fees and we see that the reservations aren't coming in at that increased fee level, which is necessary to, you know, continue operation without contributing further to the deficit, then sure, I think, I think the, I think that it's really up to the mayor, supported by staff, to make that call. It's just not going to work.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Yes, go ahead, Jared?
Eric, I just got a question for you. Maybe you saw something I didn't. I mean, we all got the same, you know, emails from constituents across the city. And while there was a lot of commentary about nostalgia, about what it means, et cetera, et cetera, I didn't, I don't remember seeing anybody saying they'd be willing to pay more to utilize services there. Did you see something, did you see those messages in those?
People did say that to me, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Dean?
I got not as many comments as the rest of you got, but I got my fair share. My issue with it is that all the arguments that I heard were emotionally based arguments, just I love the place, I have great memories of the place. I can't imagine somebody wanting, most people being willing to pay seventy-two percent more when they can rent something nice and finished and ready to go for their wedding or whatever their event is. So I guess my question is, maybe you said this already, Eric, but how long would we run this experiment?
Oh, I would guess for the balance of fiscal year 2019, if, if, if and only if, reservations came in indicating that this would, we could eliminate for the second half of FY 2019, eliminate adding to the deficit.
So would we be potentially looking at losing another forty thousand or am I missing an element to this?
I don't think so because if the projected revenues were going to come in to match the expenses, then we'd just shut it at January one, as has been proposed.
Okay, I want to ask a question, actually. So would we be, would we gain anything by just offering it for use on the weekend? Not to have it in use or have any employees booking during the week? Mayor has a question, has a comment?
That's one of the options we looked at. And believe me, we went around and around on this internally, trying to look at different options. And actually, that's one of the questions I asked. And the answer is, you need three people, even if it's open only on the weekends or if it's open, you know, all week long. And that is one, you need one person available to give tours of the facility, take reservations, answer the phone. So physically to be there during the week. And then you need at least two people, well, the third too, to help sometimes, but to set up and tear down. And, you know, when you toured the facility, you saw those, the room dividers, you know, you're setting up tables, chairs, et cetera. So we can't, we would have the same, really, largely the same employee costs for less operating time. So we have to maintain the three employees.
And Jared?
So just thinking of your projection, Eric, and, you know, being in this industry and having been in it for years, you know, the amount of money you're talking about coming up with in a relatively short period of time to change revenue streams, I mean, to increase that much is an outstanding ask of the community. I don't know that that demand exists out there. And at this point in the year, also, people, I would say, if you gave it three months after the beginning of the fiscal nineteen, you're going to know by then whether or not you've made that up. Because people don't do enough last minutes for you to make that up. If you're going to fill up the end of the, at the end of the year and you're going to get all those people in there, you're going to have them by August. You're not going to, you're not going to get them after that, you're not going to fill that in after that. People make plans ahead of time. And the kind of people who are going to make the kind of plans where they're going to have to spend the amount of money to make that gap up is significant. And they normally do those things far, far, far in advance. So just something to consider. I mean, I don't know how seriously everyone else is taking this, I'm just playing along with the idea. But, you know, after the beginning of fiscal, you know.
Well, this has really become quite a controversy here. Mayor Marlin?
Just a piece of information that we didn't provide. The, there was concern about, well, what would happen? You'd have a vacant building sitting down there and the concern about that. Well, the facilities manager is moving his office in, would move his office into the Civic Center to be onsite to monitor the building. The area, the building is zoned so that you can keep the heat on in the office, there's two offices there. You can keep the heat on in the offices and that small conference room while not having, you know, you can turn down the rest of the building. So there would be somebody onsite all the time to monitor the condition of the building.
Okay, who else? Bill?
I had a question for Elizabeth. If we were doing, starting over with the Civic Center and it was brand new now and we wanted to allocate enough money to maintain it over the years, like we're trying to do with our other facilities, do you know what the amount per year we would want to set aside for maintenance and future improvements?
No, I mean, that's really hard to say. I don't even know how much it would cost to construct that building today. And we would be very fortunate if we were able to set aside funds like that for our facilities, but-
Okay, let's say if we, if we did the, if we wanted to do the eight hundred thousand dollars, say, of improvements that it needs and we had to do a bond for that, do you know what the payment on that would be?
How many years?
Twenty. Twenty?
Well, you know, I mean, twenty would, twenty would be kind of pushing it. So let's say we did ten.
Okay.
Because we'd probably be doing a private placement and that's probably as long as most of the banks would go on a private placement debt. But, you know, rates are going up, so it depends on when you issue the debt. But, you know, eight hundred, if we, if we need eight hundred thousand, you know, nine hundred a year or ninety, sorry.
Ninety thousand a year. So really, we're talking about, if we wanted to break even, we'd have to get that ninety thousand plus the forty thousand we're losing in operations. If we wanted to try to break even on it, we really need to raise a hundred thirty thousand a year. So I don't think really, realistically, we're going to do that under the current structure. Maybe if it was used for a different purpose where it was taken in place of other city facilities or other organizations' facilities and being able to do some meetings on the side or something, it might work. But I just don't see it working the way we've been trying to work it.
All right, so do we want to actually start making some motions of action here? Eric?
So I give up. Adding the ninety thousand to the forty thousand means that we'd have to multiply the revenue by approximately three to four times. And so I give, I yield.
And now Bill Brown?
I mean, we don't have to make money. I mean, it could be a decision that we're just going to lose a hundred thousand dollars a year on, but that's what we'd be losing, not really the forty thousand. It's really, you know, the total picture would be the operational cost plus what we would have to actually put in to maintain it. And we lose money on other stuff, so we have to just decide whether it's a high enough priority to, you know, close the Boneyard Creek Park and save that fifty thousand and put up fences around that to keep the Civic Center open or what other, what other cuts we can make. And, you know, I haven't thought of any good cuts.
Mayor Marlin?
Just to be, just to be clear, the Boneyard Creek maintenance comes, does not come from the general fund. That comes from the stormwater fund. So it's, so you can't, it's all green money, but you can't trade out the Boneyard Creek dollars to go to the Civic Center. You'd have to have other dollars, other green dollars.
So can I go ahead and motion that we pass the budget as it stands or do we need to talk more?
If you did it, I'd second it.
Okay, so we have, this is ordinance 2018-06-045, an ordinance approving the fiscal year annual budget for 2018-19?
Yes, that's what I meant to say, sir.
That's right.
Yes?
Okay, so-
And I will second that motion.
And that's to send to council.
Yes.
So Dean and Jared?
Need to work on my process a little bit.
All right, we're just being polished a little bit. All right, further discussion on the budget itself? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, that will pass and go forward to City Council. Let's look at ordinance number 2018-06-046, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2017-18. This is a budget amendment number nine for fiscal year 2018. These are estimates. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we move ordinance number 2018-06-046, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 17-18, with budget amendment number nine with the FY 2018 estimates.
I'll second that.
Forward to full council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay.
Yep.
Jared Miller and seconded by Mary Alice Wu. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Okay, finally, Resolution 2018-06-023R, a resolution adopting financial policies 2018. Is there a motion for that?
I'll also make that motion. That's for Resolution number 2018-06-023R, a resolution adopting financial policies for fiscal year 2018, forward to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
And I'll second.
Okay, Dean Hazen makes a second.
Or I won't.
Mary Alice Wu would like to, okay, this is time for discussion. Mary Alice?
Yes, thank you. I'm just curious what the current policy is for the balanced budget if we're asking it to not exceed ninety-eight point five percent?
So the current policy is that recurring expenditures will not exceed recurring revenues?
So a hundred.
So we could be up to a hundred percent, yeah?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Very good. All right, okay, Erin Adams?
I'm not sure. I wasn't here last week, so I'm trying to pull all this together. But the financial policy about the hiring practice, was that moved, was that passed already in full council last week? The fiscal year, what did it say here? Okay, here we go. That the request to fill vacant or newly created staff positions will be reviewed by Department Head, Finance Director, Human Resource Director, and the mayor.
That's not actually included in the financial policies, but that's something that we'll just be doing routinely.
That's not the way hiring practices are currently done? I thought it sounded-
I think what, I think what Mr. Rant had suggested was that we would be doing a more extensive review. There is sign off from all of those people currently, but we would be doing a more extensive review and questioning a little more about the need to actually fill positions that become vacant.
Okay, but the actual hire process, does it require the Department Head, the Finance Director, the Human Resource Director, and the mayor to approve a hire?
Yeah, yes, we all signed the form.
Yeah, we all signed the form.
That's what it currently is? That's not a proposal? Okay, all right.
So that's a maintenance of an existing policy then? Maintaining an existing policy?
I think this was in the, this was in the context of the overall budget. So because we're looking at general fund expenditures every time- So, because we're looking at general fund expenditures, every time there's a vacancy, we'll be looking at that position with a little, you know, closer scrutiny to see, well, is there a way to reorganize a department? Is there a way to do things less? But typically, yeah, each of those people mentioned signs off anyway. So, when you're in this kind of a budget situation, you always just take an extra look at each vacancy?
No, I can understand that. I respect that. I saw it says 73% of our overall operating funds is personnel costs.
That's right.
Right? So, I understand that we're looking at how, you know, being very intentional about these, the hires that we have. I'll just leave that there for now.
Okay. Other comments? Then, all those in favor of passing the resolution as named, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes and we'll go forward to city council for approval. This takes us to item number 11, which is Resolution number 2018-06-024R, a resolution asserting the prevailing wages for 2018-19. This is also a finance issue.
Yes. This is, this is an annual exercise required by law in the state of Illinois. And so, cities across the state in June every year adopt the prevailing wage based on information provided by the Illinois Department of Labor.
So, moved.
Second. Okay, that was Erin Evans, and seconded by, was it Eric? Eric Jacobson. Okay, is there discussion for that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, that would be sent forward to city council with approval. Now, we have Resolution 2018-06-02-R, 02-5-R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Champaign and the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for a bicycle-sharing program.
Yes. Good evening. So, this is a request for approval of a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Champaign and the University of Illinois for dockless bike-share systems. So, as you'll recall, in April, I came to the Committee of the Whole and outlined the joint effort that Urbana was undertaking with Champaign and the university to develop common regulations for dockless bike-share operators. At that time, we had a draft agreement that we were working on, and it was mostly complete, but it was not quite ready to be presented to council. Specifically, it needed a more complete mechanism to ensure compliance and to revoke licenses for operators who don't comply with regulations. And also, it just needed more general editorial changes to make it more complete, more legally sound. So, since that April meeting, I wanna give a big thank you to Jim Simon and to the legal staffs from Champaign and from the university. They've done a thorough review and made edits to that draft agreement, which you now have in front of you in your staff memo. So, that is, so that intergovernmental agreement is now up for your consideration. So, as in the memo that you saw in April, the current memo that you have in front of you summarizes what's in the draft intergovernmental agreement. The changes that have been added to that draft agreement since April are underlined in your memo, so it'll be easy, easy to spot those proposed changes. Briefly, they are, we just added a clarification in the memo that the number of bikes that would be allowed per operator can be increased or decreased. So, before, it just said increased, but there is a mechanism that would allow decreasing the number of bikes, say, if they became problematic and there were too many. The second change is that we've drafted specific insurance requirements for operators. The earlier version just said operators need to have insurance. This one spells that out. And then, the final change is, as I mentioned a little, a little bit earlier, our rules regarding compliance and then revocation of licenses for non-compliant operators. So, you will recall that at our discussion in April, I think a lot of the concern was about the parking of dockless bikes. And as, as we discussed at that meeting, parking regulations aren't included in the intergovernmental agreement. The IGA leaves those up to individual, the individual parties. So, Urbana, Champaign, and the university will all have different parking regulations. And we've been working, we're working on those with Public Works. And then, those will be part of the ordinance that would be adopted, that actually adopts the bike-share regulations. So, just in brief, tonight, you're considering the IGA, the intergovernmental agreement, which essentially states these are the minimum regulations that we're agreeing to, that we're agreeing upon with Champaign and the university. We'll all have these common regulations. And then, later, we will, we'll ask for an ordinance to be adopted that specifically include those regulations, but then also include specific parking requirements. That concludes my report. If there are any questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thanks, Kevin. Do council members have questions for Kevin Garcia? Dean?
Does that mean that you won't be able to answer specific things right now? Like, for example, what if somebody locks this bike in an inconvenient place on private property? What can the owner do? Are you able to, are you equipped to answer those questions without that?
Well, I can, I mean, I can answer those questions, 'cause we'll, you know, we'll have, have to have those regulations in place pretty, pretty quickly. So, if you're asking that specific question...
Yes, 'cause I realize that there's, you know, a three-hour response if it's during peak hours, but that 12-hour response if it's in off-peak hours, let's say they lock it on my private property or abandon it there, what can I as a property owner do? Can I dispose of it if I don't want it there 12 hours? You know, what if it's blocking an ADA ramp or something? What can I do as a property owner is my question?
Right. Well, since, since the bikes only lock to themselves, if it were, say, blocking an ADA ramp, I'd just suggest that you move it away from that ramp and then call the company and tell them that bike, you know, somebody parked this bike in, you know, in an important access ramp.
Let me rephrase it, sorry. Can I get it off my property if I want to?
Yes.
Or am I somehow gonna be liable for something if I dispose of it?
No, if it's parked on your property, you can, you can get rid of it. I mean, I wouldn't suggest that you throw it in a dumpster or something like that, but you could move it from your property, preferably into the right-of-way, and then just call the company and tell them they need to pick it up.
Okay.
'Cause there will be a number on, on every bike.
So, you could set it out on the, basically, the curb, the parkway there? How many, I know it's capped at 500 bikes per operator, how many operators would we have initially?
Well, I think, as I think I mentioned back, back in April, and I'm sure, we don't all recall everything that happened in April or last week, for that matter, yeah. But, we, I think we initially had about seven operators that expressed interest. I think that number is probably maybe four or five that are actually serious that we, we might expect to come to town.
So, potentially, like, 2,000 bikes right off the bat?
If everybody brings the maximum, yes, but I, I'm not sure that each company is going to be equipped to, to drop 500 bikes on day one. I think a lot of the companies, or at least, sorry, some of the companies, some of the companies definitely, it seems like they operate where they will drop the maximum number of bikes. But I think other companies have a different model where they sort of scale up. So, you might see 100 or 200 from one of those other companies, and then, if they're doing well, then they'll scale that up over time.
I just wanted to express one of my concerns amongst many is I've read that these companies try to one-up each other. Everybody's trying to get more bikes into the community to make more business. So, that's why I was asking that question. Thank you.
Other, yes, Jared?
This is a question for our B-PAC chair, actually. Do you guys have estimates for the amount of bikes currently being used by students on campus when students are here? Or do you know, do you know the answer to that, Kevin?
I do not. I wish Lily Wilcock was here from, from B-PAC and from the university. No, I, I have no idea. I, I know they get hundreds of bikes every year that are abandoned on campus. So, I know the university is excited to have potential for bike share, because then they can say, "Don't bring your junk bike to campus, just use the bike share." But...
They do a count once a year in October, I think it's been October, where they count how many bikes are parked in racks. That would be the closest estimate, as far as I know. And then, we have some traffic counts of how many bikes cross the specific intersections, like on Lincoln and stuff. But, as far as how many bikes are in use on a given day, I don't think we have anything other than maybe that, that bike rack thing. Do you remember how many that was, Charlie?
I'm currently asking the, some of the staff at Champaign County Bikes the question, but I think it's around 4,000. I'll know soon.
I'm just asking that, Kevin. And, you know, the scenario is not necessarily that every, I don't think we also heard an answer to Dean's question about whether or not there's a cap on the number of operators we're going to allow.
Right. There'd be, the proposal is not to cap the number of operators, it's capping the number of bikes per operator.
Okay. 'Cause I'm, I'm just thinking of, you know, volume and how much, you know, additional traffic you're creating by those bikes. I've been in a lot of different bike communities. My sister used to go to school in Santa Barbara, and if you've ever been on the UC Santa Barbara campus, it is insane with bikes. I mean, they're, they're, it's like, you know, if you imagine herds and herds of buffaloes, they're just everywhere, and you can't walk anywhere because there's thousands and thousands of them. Our campus is not like that. So, you know, I'm just thinking of the daily volume increase. Are we doubling, you know, are we gonna have 100% more than what we see on campus now with all these companies here? I'm just taking it into consideration. That's, that's why I was asking.
Eric Jacobson?
Yeah, I don't see any reason, and I haven't seen any data, that suggests that the total number of bikes will be greater than there are now. I mean, I think people, some people may opt to rent as opposed to buy. And we, we have, you know, an issue with abandoned bikes now. I mean, we, we sell them every year because they're abandoned and they, or we give them, or we give them away. So, I, I just, I just don't perceive the, as likely, this scenario that we're going to be overwhelmed with rental bikes. I think we'll see some people who might have purchased a bike will choose to rent, but the volume will probably be very similar.
Okay, Mary Alice?
So, I'm curious how the, the peak period times were created, if you could speak to that.
Yeah, so, the thinking behind the peak period times, and let me get to that.
It's on the second page.
Yeah. Oh, of the, of the staff memo?
Yes.
I was looking in the IGA instead. Yeah, look at that. So, the thinking there was that, was, so you have, say, a morning rush where students or, you know, or people going to work might be using bikes to get to wherever they're going. So, then, by, by 10:00 a.m., those bikes are probably parked and would be, you know, and would be where, where the initial riders of the day would be parking them. So, that's why the peak starts at 10:00 a.m. And then, you have, I guess, in the evening, the evening rush, which would go past 5:00, so we chose 6:00 for that. And then, just on, on weekends, so on Friday, at least on Friday and Saturday, you might have people going out to dinner or going out to other places, riding the bikes there. And then, it seemed reasonable to say 10:00 p.m., but maybe not to say, like, 2:00 a.m. to, you know, to catch the late crowd, because I don't know that, I mean, I think that's making a big ask of a company to have, have staff, you know, later than 10:00 p.m. And they could just go pick those bikes up, I guess, the next day, if that's the case. And I think these are pretty similar to what you'd see, to what we're seeing in other communities as well, 'cause we did do extensive research on, on what other communities were, were requiring.
So, I was just, as I looked at the operators must provide local staff contacts between 8:00 and 6:00, I was wondering why not make the peak hours just kind of match that so that, I mean, we already are requiring them to have staff that you can contact. It would make sense to me to have the same hours of operation in terms of peak hours, because that is the three-hour window, right? That's, that's the whole rationale for having those.
Yeah, and I, and I suppose if you called at 9:00 a.m., or if you called a staff person at 8:00 or 9:00 a.m., they would, they would probably get out and pick it up. I don't, so I don't think we'd give them 12 hours. We wouldn't say you can pick it up by 8:00 p.m. Because even though the start of, even though when the call was made, it would be, it would be off-peak, I think that would say that they'd need to have it picked up by 11:00 a.m. is how that would work in, in practice.
But by law, they would not have to pick it up until 8:00 p.m. So, if somebody called at 8:00 a.m., by this, by this agreement, they wouldn't have to pick those bikes up until 8:00 p.m. But if they called at 10:00 a.m., they'd have to pick it up by 1:00 p.m. Is that correct?
That, that might be right. We can revisit that, but I think the intent is that, is that, is that they would need to pick it up within, you know, by, yeah.
It might be cleaner just to, just to have it match those hours?
Yeah.
In that way, it's just more transparent.
Good point, yeah. All right, we can look into that.
Okay. My, my second question is on the, you had...
Yes, Mary Alice, second question?
Thank you. The initial fleet size operator can be kept at 500 bicycles. This can be increased or decreased if IGA parties agree. That has to be agreed upon by all three?
It would. But we have, we have a good working relationship and if, so, for example, for the revocation of a license, we've agreed that if one of the IGA parties has an issue with an operator, then the others will honor, you know, will honor that, that issue that they have and revoke the license. So, I imagine if one of the IGA partners has a real issue with the number of bikes that are there, they would confer with the other two parties and they would all agree to, you know, to decrease the amount of bikes for the next year.
So, what is the order of operations, since we're making this agreement with the Board of Trustees? Do they have somebody who they've designated or empowered to make these decisions? Or does it have to actually go to the Board of Trustees?
Well, we would, I'm, I'm not sure about that, actually. We, we have staff members, so I'm our staff member, we have staff, you know, we have counterparts. And, and we would be functioning as, you know, as the designate, I guess, for the, for each And then, yeah, but, no, good, good question. I'm not sure exactly how that would, how that would function.
Okay. All right. Well, it'd be good to know the answer to that before moving forward with this. And then, I have one more, I promise, Aaron. Is that okay? Dennis?
Yes, I think it's fair to have all your questions answered.
Thank you. So, we, we had conversations about each entity gets to make their own kind of decisions in terms of what proper places to park and so forth. Does that mean that if we agree to this intergovernmental agreement, that in order for the first license to be issued, that all three parties have to have those rules in place?
So, the, yes, the intergovernmental agreement says we all agree to these rules, and we will all draft, so we will draft an ordinance that, that includes... And we will all draft, so we will draft an ordinance that, that includes these rules and then can include, well, they don't, they don't have to include, we wouldn't, we don't have to create our own parking rules, but the IGA gives us the ability to do that. So I suppose if, say, Champaign or the university didn't want to draft their own parking rules when they, when they, when they draft their own ordinances, I'm not sure what the university calls it, they don't draft ordinances, but when they create their regulations, they don't have to create parking rules. So I guess in, you know, in the way the operations work, they don't have to have those rules, so somebody might not have parking rules.
Sure, sure.
When the first license is issued.
That makes sense. I just, I don't, I don't want this going, I don't want us, or City of Champaign or the people who are going to be issuing the licenses, right? So I don't want them issuing it before we have an opportunity to pass an ordinance. But I realize it's a timing thing and it's just a small thing. It's just a comment. All right, so those are my questions.
Okay, so our city council had a comment to add to your question. Jim?
Ultimately, when you look at the IGA, there are two primary areas of regulation that the city of Urbana will retain. One of them is parking. As Kevin indicated, CD and Public Works are working on designating parking. I will tell you, based on the language of this document, which I, I basically took the scattered provisions that were in the original document that others drafted and put them into this document. We, the ordinance that would be the companion to this is about 94, 95% drafted, based on, assuming you all accept this, that the parking regulations are not included. If we adopt parking regulations and Champaign doesn't, we can enforce our parking regulations and Champaign is left to do what they wish. The university doesn't adopt ordinances per se. They operate in this area with something called a concession agreement, which has to be signed. And it provides whatever rules, which I assume would include parking. So they do it by contract as opposed to adopting campus-wide rules and regulations. Obviously, the contract from one provider to another in terms of parking is going to be the same. The other area that where it's left up to the cities and the university is enforcement. The provisions that I have drafted allow, as the IGA provides, we, the only thing that is required is that we have a due process procedure and a right of appeal. So what I have done is I've drafted a due process procedure with a right of appeal. If one, unless the language has been changed since I wrote it a week or so ago, if the, if one of the agencies, the university, Urbana, or Champaign, has a problem, they, through whatever their process is, in our case, it'll be our, the process we adopt, would recommend to the lead agency, in this case, it will start out being Champaign, to revoke the license. And unless there's been a change in the IGA that I'm not aware of since I, since I distributed the draft, the lead agency would be required to revoke the license across all three jurisdictions. So we can regulate parking, we can enforce, we'll be able to fine, we'll be able to recoup the expenses that our staff incurs in getting calls and removing these things. And there will be a $1,000 deposit. And our ordinance is going to provide essentially that, obviously, we will be able to deduct the costs of our staff's time at the normal value. And Public Works and PD know what they charge for their time because they do charge time, for instance, for the marathon. So, and public events. So they know what they're going to charge. We, we are going to require, at least if you adopt my ordinance, that there is a cash deposit. No bonds, no surety, no self-retention for that, i.e., we have a, we have a process, they are fined, assuming a fine is issued, right away we can deduct. There's also a requirement that they're going to have to replenish that. So our ordinance will provide for deduction for fines and for, and/or for the cost of relocating bikes. And they are going to have, they'll get a notice and they're going to have to replenish back up to $1,000. If at the time that the license comes up for renewal, licenses, I believe they'll run out, Kevin, what is it, June 30?
Correct.
If they haven't paid their fines or reimbursed or brought their security deposit up, they will not be able to get a license, no matter that they are in good stead with the other two agencies.
Okay, so perhaps that assuages all the concerns that we might have here, except there's more questions coming up, so. Okay, Bill Brown?
First, Charlie told me that he got the message that there were 5,000 counted last year.
5,000 what?
5,000 bikes counted in, in bike racks. So those weren't moving bikes, those were stationary bikes parked. So who knows how many of those actually move every day, but that's at least some estimate. I had a question about, I know both times we've discussed this before, I was concerned about, or one of the selling points of this is to allow more equity in biking, let people that don't have bikes get into it pretty inexpensively and maybe experiment with getting to work that way, see if they really need a car and maybe be able to do without a car, things like that. And one of the concerns I had was that if some of the bike companies used what they called geo-fencing to require you to keep the bike within a specific area, especially if it's a really close area around campus or something like that, it wouldn't really address the equity issue because a lot of our lower-income areas are on the edges of town. So I wondered if you guys discussed that at all and if, the only solution I'd seen in, in one city, they required the, the bike companies to have a certain number, any toward, I don't know how they define wards, but our wards are mostly, five of the seven would be campus, they could put them on campus anyway. So I don't know. Did you guys talk about that and are there any possible solutions to that?
Well, we, we discussed it a little bit. I think in terms of the, the geo-fencing question, all the companies that we've talked to have just indicated that it would be at least Champaign-Urbana-wide. They haven't, nobody has expressed that they would be narrowly focused, like, say, right around campus and campus town or anything like that. We, we've been talking about this Docless Bike Share for quite a while, so I can't recall all of our earliest conversations. But I do know, like you said, there are some communities where you might say you need to have X amount of bikes in certain areas. We didn't pursue that avenue. It's, it might be something we could look at in the future, but no, we didn't, you know, we, we didn't consider putting that in the intergovernmental agreement.
Okay. Then, I know with, even with just 5,000 on campus, sometimes I have hard trouble parking where I want to park. So presumably, there will be extra bike parking added. How do you see the city improving our bike, bike parking, either downtown or in, in other retail areas that don't have enough really?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And I'd say initially, we'd probably just wait, you know, we'd want to wait and see where these bikes are actually ending up. And then if, if we see a lot of bikes ending up in certain areas, then we can add parking to those areas. I think our Public Works has done a, a really great job of putting a lot of bike parking in downtown, which is where I imagine a lot of the bikes are going to, going to end up. But I think it's, it's one of those wait-and-see things where if we see a lot of bikes in a certain area, we can, you know, we can spring into action and install more parking in those locations.
Okay, I guess I'd be in favor of looking at our TIF program on, like Cunningham and seeing if we could do like a public-private partnership where we'd, we'd do like 50% or something if businesses wanted to put in additional parking and encourage more bike share use.
I think that's a good idea because outside of downtown, most of the business areas are, it's, it's private where, where the bike parking might need to go, so I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. All right. Aaron, did, you were, you've answered your one question or whatever. Mayor Marlin?
I forgot to ask this earlier. How do you verify fleet size? I mean, what's to stop a company from saying, "Oh, we're bringing in 500," but actually it's 750? Who counts the bikes?
Oh, well, I think we have a good, we have a really great mechanism for that. So any bike that operates on the University of Illinois campus has to be registered. So each one of these bikes is going to have to be individually registered with the university. So, and they get a prominent sticker on the bikes that shows that it's registered.
So that's before they're deployed?
Correct.
Okay.
But in other communities, I, I guess you'd just have to trust the companies, because I don't know other communities that would have, you know, such a robust system. But luckily, we have that.
So all bikes coming into Champaign-Urbana will go through the university registration system first?
Yes, because they, they're all probably going to end up on campus at one point or another, right?
Thank you.
Gerard?
Gerard.
Gerard would like to make a motion that we move Resolution Number 2018-06-025, our resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Champaign and the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for a bicycle sharing program forward to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Second? Okay. Gerard Miller, seconded by Bill Brown. Is there further discussion? I'll just say that it only takes one errant shopping cart on my parkway to get me upset. But I guess bikes will be different. Okay, thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Negative, no.
Okay, there's one, one vote against. If that passes, however, and goes to city council with approval. All right, we've got some mayoral, mayoral reappointments to boards and commissions. I guess we'll take each commission separately and I'll just go through the names. First, the Bike, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission with term ending June 30th, 2021. The appointment, the pointees are Jeff Marino and Lily Wilcock. I could use a motion.
Do you need a motion?
I think so, yes.
I move approval.
I'll second.
These go to, these need to go to council.
With a recommendation for approval.
With a recommendation for approval.
Council. Can we, shall we just, do you want to?
You can do one big one.
Do through the whole list? All right, all right. So, all right, so I'm going to just read the rest of them. Civil Service Commission, term ending June 30th, 2021, Marian Knight, Jr. Human Relations Commission, term ending June 30th, 2021, Lisa Mosley. The MOR Development Review Board, term ending June 30th, 2021, Matt Cho. The Planning Commission, term ending June 30th, 2021, Tyler Fitch, who's the chair. The Public Arts Commission, term ending June 30th, 2021, Patricia Salmon, Chair. Tree Commission, term ending June 30th, 2021, Steve Burkholder, Britelhooker.
Stuart.
Stuart, yeah. I'm going to start that. Urbana Public Television Commission, term ending June 30th, 2021, Peter Volk as Chair and Marie Polk. And the Zoning Board of Appeals, term ending June 30th, 2023, Ashley McLaughlin.
I move we send these mayoral reappointments to city council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, Gerard Miller is seconding it by a quick shot?
I have a question.
Any, any conversation?
I have a question.
Yes?
I'm wondering if the mayor can tell us how many openings there are on the boards and commissions currently?
I'll have that next week. We're still adding things up. We're still waiting for the last people to respond, whether or not they want to continue. And then we should have a list next week. But I know there will be some openings and I'll get that out to you so we can...
Excellent, thank you.
Let people know.
All right, then we can probably vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. I believe we have no other business for tonight, therefore, we are adjourned.